Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 7:30. Going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting of Monday, December 14th. Clerk, can you please take a roll call? And just a reminder to announce where you are, the county that you are in.
Councilman Bliss?
I'm here, remote. Vote in Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan.
Councilwoman Clark? Councilman Corbett?
Present here in Oakland County.
Councilman Gennings?
Here in Oakland County, Michigan.
Councilor Rorback?
I'm here, remote in Oakland County, Michigan.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Here, remote Oakland County, Michigan.
Mayor Graffstein?
I'm here and I am present in chambers. The Councilwoman Clark has requested that she be excused tonight. Can I have a motion for that, excuse'll please?
Your Honor?
Corbett?
Move to excuse Councilman Clark. Councilwoman Clark, sorry.
Yeah, can I have a second?
Your Honor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to excuse Councilwoman Clark from this evening's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Councilwoman Clark is excused. Invocation this evening will be led or will be given by Mayor Potem Soltis, followed by him leading the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Soltis, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Tonight, I want to do, give a quote from Robert Kennedy. It's kind of pertinent to what's going on. Every time we turn our heads the other way when we see the law about it, when we tolerate what we know to be wrong, when we close our eyes and ears to the corrupt because we are too busy, too frightened, when we fail to speak up and out, we strike blow against freedom and decency and justice. Thank you.
Could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
The United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Invisible. Liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Great, thank you. First up, we have the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions for this evening?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
And I just lost the paper I had it written on, but it, I would move to add to the agenda. I think it's under communications. Am I correct, ma'am?
E six.
E six, okay. Move add to E six. Approval of an agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the fire department.
It's just a slight correction. It is D six.
D six, my apology.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Graffstein?
Mr. Gennings?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion to add this to the agenda? All right. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. This has been added to the agenda. Are there any other additions or deletions for this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go to presentations. First up is the crisis response team certificates of recognition. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
The city council is being requested to present certificates of recognition to Sarah Karas and Marilyn Maylie for their dedication to and membership in the crisis response team. This program was the first operational police-based victim advocate program in the state of Michigan. The program's purpose was to provide basic crisis intervention to those in need and supply referral information for people who needed additional assistance. The chaplains have taken over most of these duties. And I don't think Marilyn is with us tonight, but I have not seen Sarah.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council? Or do we need to?
We really, Your Honor, I, you really don't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
Can I just make a comment?
Please.
The, there's quite a bit of emphasis these days on the, on the quality and the nature of response to a crisis when we're involving our first responders, police coming to the scene. In the case, quite often, of the first responder, of the crisis responders, incidents of abuse and conflict in homes. And nowadays, we're talking about the larger communities, the larger cities are talking about bringing professionals along to the scene, sociologists, psychologists, and that kind of thing. Well, that, that never was in the cards financially for a town like Madison Heights, but what we did have were the outstanding men and women like Marilyn Maylie and, and the ones who've worked with her over the years. They've been here since before I got here. And they would, at all times of the day and night, all sorts of circumstances of extreme emotion would come in and help out. And I don't, you know, in this day and age, I'm sure I don't have to tell anybody the sorts of issues that they would face, but they did it with dignity and grace. They stayed with people, kept contact afterwards. And they really were the, in a lot of cases, they really were the reasons that things didn't get worse at the door. So I just want to say that these really are the angels of our community, those that get up and walk into problems. And so, thank you, ma'am. And those that have done that work before, they really, they've really made a contribution to the city and the quality of life and, and the people who have been affected by, by violence, domestic and otherwise. Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Marilyn, seeing how you are on, is there anything you would like to add? And thank you for, for all your work, but is there anything you wanted to say?
Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the team. And I enjoyed all my years on it. I'm sorry that it was just banned.
Thank you for, for all your help. It's much appreciated. All right. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to voice their comments. Please make sure to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Give your name, address, any affiliation with the city. Meeting is now open to the public if you want to speak. If you want to raise your hand or.
Your Honor?
Oh, sorry.
I think it's a public hearing for the master plan, right?
It is. You are correct. All right. And then we're going to do, okay, public hearing for recreation master plan. Mrs. Marsh, did you want to speak?
Yes, at their meeting on November the 19th, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board unanimously recommended approval of the 2021 to 25 recreation plan, which has been under development over the last year. The state requires the city to have a five-year master plan on file with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources to apply for any state grants offered in the next five years. The draft plan has been posted on the city's website and was made available in print in the public to the city clerk's office and the library to meet the state's minimum 30-day review and comment period. Tonight, council is being requested to hold a public hearing on this plan. Following the required public hearing, staff and I recommend approval of the resolution to adopt the plan. And Jill from Giffords Webster is present tonight to answer any questions along with the DPS Director Cory Almas.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we are going to open the public hearing for the recreation master plan. So if there's any comments from the public regarding the recreation master plan, if you could raise your hand, let us know. Comments from the public?
Mary Bush has her hand raised.
Okay, Mary. Want to unmute? Floor is yours. You need to unmute.
Thank you. I appreciate that. To start with, I want to say thank you to Melissa for making sure that a copy of the plan was accessible to everybody and we were able to get it out on, on Facebook. Having reviewed the master plan or the proposed recreation master plan, I have the following comments. I think it was an excellent analysis of the content of the existing parks and the proposed plan objectives, but I, I noticed that, for the most part, I'm looking through my notes here, for the most part, I would like to see a specific goal to meet the park desert that exists south of Lincoln. We have, we have an area down here that used to be the old Sunset Park, and there needs to be a thoughtful and intentional partnership between the city and the Madison District Public Schools to further develop that area. That area of land is the only place for children in this neighborhood to play without crossing a major thoroughfare of either Lincoln or John R. That's it. So I would suggest that we have a project to do the following. As the land is adjacent to Madison District Public Schools, that we rename it to the Sunrise Park Cooperative, because it's a cooperative between the district and the city, that the entire area needs to be fenced for safety, that the baseball diamond that is never used should be repurposed to a half-court basketball. You can even leave the, the baseball diamond backdrop up if you backed up the basketball hoop to that area. Perhaps a small dog park, because I see a lot of people in our neighborhood walking them. We could have it be the size similar to the one that's over in Hazel Park off Cousins. The younger children do have a new play area that was installed through the school last year, I believe. However, and, and I understand that there are some of the activity sidewalk paintings that are planned with Eve Sandoval in the school district. I also think this would be a great place for some of those more passive elements that were addressed in the plan, like a small pavilion with a couple of benches, some picnic tables, just as a community meeting place for the elderly or even our teenagers. Perhaps like a fixed chess table and a couple of benches would be outstanding. And definitely the planting of more trees. I think that the green leaf, if you'll notice down here in the south end, were really tree deficient, and that would be a good place for that as well in terms of parks and recreation. This is going to take the cooperation of the district, the city, and even maybe some private funding. And, you know, if you guys want some help and some ideas, maybe it would be useful to have a committee just to focus on this area and how we could best develop it through the school and the residents of the area. So please make this an additional goal for inclusion. And beyond that, I just, in looking at the parks plans for Ferndale and Claussen and Royal Oak, we really have an excellent parks system. And I think it's the hard work of the city council and the, and the employees of the Madison, the Madison Heights that keep it that way. So thank you very much, and that's my comment. Mary Bush, 1117 East Hudson.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to make a comment about the recreation master plan? Okay, I am not seeing any, not seeing any other comments. So we'll close that. Public hearing for the recreation master plan is closed, and we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is meeting open to the public. This is on any topic. So if there's anyone that I missed?
If council wishes to adopt this plan, now is the time to do that.
Okay.
Comments from Jill, who is present today, she can kind of review it and talk about it for a minute.
All right.
Mr. Graffstein?
Mr. Gennings?
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'd be glad to make a motion to accept it. I just wanted to make one comment. I was reading it over today and I found what I think might be some errors listing like a basketball court somewhere that might not really be there. I don't know how much of a big deal that is if we're applying for state grants and things like that, but I didn't get a chance to go out today and look it over, the different sites that I thought were incorrect. But I'd be glad to make a motion to accept the master plan from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gennings. I think we're going to let Jill speak first.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jill Bane with Giffords Webster. I have Matt Wojciechowski with me as well. The two of us were your primary team that worked on the recreation plan along with your staff. I have to agree with Mrs. Bush that, that your park system is a really, it's very unique in the area, I would agree. The amount of parks that you have and the amenities at them and the community's engagement with those parks is really, really great. And we are happy to be a part of that with you. I'm not really sure. I do have, I just had a short PowerPoint that goes over the process, if that's of interest, or I can just answer any specific questions you have. In general, the, the plan adheres to the requirements of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. We do that to keep you eligible for grant funding. Their current deadline for the upcoming year of recreation plans is February 1st, and then grant applications are due April 1st. So we want to keep you in line in moving towards those goals, should you be interested in pursuing grants in the upcoming year. I have some other thoughts that tie in with the master plan discussion, and I don't, I can kind of wait until then. But part of it is, it does relate to Ms. Bush's comments about a committee or getting the community engaged, and that's through the idea of the neighborhoods. And we can touch on that a little bit more in the next section, but I think it has relevance to recreation planning and frankly, a lot of other short and long-range planning efforts that you have going on in the city. So we can talk about that at that point, if that's easier to, to have that framework, or we can continue on now.
Let's save that for the master plan, then. Is that, okay. All right. Were there any questions from council regarding the recreation master plan?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Would we need a, a motion in a second to be able to go into discussion first? Just a question for Mr. Sherman.
Your Honor?
Please.
There isn't, if, if, if we're done with the discussion, it would be appropriate now to, to take up Councilman Gennings' motion relating to approving the recreation master plan and then open it to discussion once there's a second.
Okay. Does someone want to second? Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there, is there any discussion? Mr. Gennings, did you, did you have any other comments you wanted to make? We're going to enter discussion.
Well, Ms. Graffstein, I think it's a, a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And, you know, I'm pro recreation. A lot of time and effort went into it. And it's good to have a, a map or a, a goal for five years, but I don't want to sit here and just keep talking. I don't know, it's going to be a long meeting. But again, I think it's a great job by everybody involved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Bliss, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. I, I'm not on the Parks and Rec Board for this go-around, and so I'm kind of reviewing it as all of the residents are in this case. And I had a couple of questions regarding some of the priorities and maybe Ms. Baum or, you know, our parks rep could jump into it. But I don't understand why we've got $50,000 dedicated to adding a pavilion in Rosie's Park and then another $35,000 to develop a skate park reuse plan. You know, just in my personal opinion, that money would be better suited for a park amenity, whether it's a new play structure, you know, some of the additional costs from the splash pad, which, you know, I'm not seeing in here, but I also thought that that was covered from the donations from the, the new medical marijuana businesses. I thought that was a part of their packet. So I know it's a lot, you know, I guess the, the question on what each of those things are and why they were ranked ahead of putting in new amenities, you know, as opposed to adding the pavilion and the study.
Tom, could you answer that?
I would defer actually to Cory Almas on that, if that's all right.
Sure. Cory?
Yeah, I, I'll have to review the, the plan, Mr. Bliss, to, to identify why it was prioritized the way it was. I can't answer that right now, but the, the allocation of the costs is just a, just an estimate. And the, the whole, the purpose of, of the master plan is just the guideline of, of what the residents want to see. It's nothing that was implemented by staff. It's just the guideline and going back even to five years and some of the, some of the features that we put in from the previous master plan are already underway. Tree planting, park, park trails improvements, and, and some of those play structures at Wildwood and grants that were afforded the city because of that. So we're using this as kind of guideline that, that we bring forward to, to council and Parks and Rec Board for their, for their, I guess, implementation, if that helps.
Your Honor, if I might continue? Thank you. I, I understand the guideline thing. I, I think for me, the sticking point is what the, what our goals are in print, I think matters. I think it, it helps set the, the direction of everything that we want to accomplish. And as much as I'd love to have a rentable pavilion for use in Rosie's Park, you know, we're also not necessarily utilizing in full the building that we have there. You know, that's not being able to be rented over right now. And so when I look at it and I see $50,000 in a five-year period, that's potentially going to be really slim for the types of investments that we can make. I personally would like to see that dedicated and, you know, plan for a new addition somewhere in our parks, something, you know, maybe athletic equipment that, you know, our, our seniors could, could use in the park system or toddler playscapes or a splash pad, you know, popular amenities that have been popular across multiple surveys over the last five years. So, you know, I understand that our vote tonight doesn't lock anything in. You know, there's able to be changes, but I would just request after this vote, if staff could come back with kind of what that ranking was, and then if there's any, you know, edits that need to be made. I wouldn't even mind if it was kind of an either-or option that the Parks and Rec Board could deliberate on, you know, make the decision and, and give us some guidance as to whether or not residents would prefer a pavilion versus something like a splash pad or toddler scape. But right now, you know, we're just saying, do the pavilion for 50,000, and it's leaving out the potential amenities that I think might have a greater impact for the, you know, small dollars of budget that we have available. Just my two cents. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Councilor Rorback or Councilman Corbett? Did you want to say something being on the, Councilor Rorback?
Your Honor, yes. I'd like to say, maybe our representative from Giffords Webster can also address this, but the input from the community started, you know, last year, and it was ongoing, both through an online survey. We had it open house, and all of that information was taken and, you know, used to create this. I think I agree with Mr. Bliss that, you know, there are more opportunities out there, and I think we can always, like, like we've said, we can always add to this and we can always take it away. This is not a written and stone document. This is kind of a, a guideline, but if we find that something is not working or something, it doesn't fit, then it can be changed. You know, this is not a, this is nothing set in stone. And then, but I believe, and a rep from Giffords Webster might be able to reconfirm this, but the, the pavilions question came up a lot in our, in the public comment and survey that, that was done since 2019. So those, those kinds of amenities are things that people are asking for, and so that's how it ended up in the plan, because it wasn't just a once, once somebody asked this one thing. It, it came up quite often. So, and then I'm just thinking into the future, and hopefully, we won't have to, to deal with this that, that much in the future, but having outdoor, open-air facilities where people can gather in small groups, you know, with open air rather than inside enclosed spaces, seems like a good, good thing to be able to have, especially in this, in this day and age. I would have loved to have this more often. I certainly know that I have had to go to surrounding cities in the past when our one rentable pavilion in Madison Heights hasn't been available for a child's birthday party or things like that. And so it would be a helpful thing to have in our, in our park system more often. So I, I think it's a, it's a good thing to have, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I think it adds a lot of value to the parks that people have asked for. So I, I don't want that to, to be misconstrued in any way, because it's not, it didn't, I don't think the Parks Board or anybody came up with it just like out of, out of thin air. It wasn't, it was part that people had mentioned and asked for.
And I would support that, those, all those comments. It wasn't really a question that I, I think I needed to answer because you answered it really well. Yeah, to say, yeah, I think that was right. I, you, the Parks Board spent a lot of time talking about all these different things, and certainly the results of the survey, people want a lot of amenities. And the challenge then, as you know, is balancing out how we not only construct and build new things, but how we maintain them in the long run. And so there was a real balance, and I think it, it was a good process in that aspect with staff and the Parks Board discussing. The splash pad is a perfect example. A lot of people want a splash pad, a water feature of some sort. But immediately, I think staff thinks about and has, has to think about, well, that's fine, we could install it for this much money. But then, what are the ongoing maintenance costs associated with this? And is that the best use of our limited resources? Or are there other things that we can do? But certainly, through this process, they talked about, but we should study it so that we know when people ask, why can't we have a splash pad? We can say, well, we could have a splash pad. It's going to cost us this much money, and it's going to cost us this much every year. And as a community, are we really, are we willing to move forward with that? With the potential loss of something else? Now, if you have additional funds that you come into and you say, we're going to build a splash pad, then that's perfectly awesome. Each year, as you move into your capital improvement programming, you'll take this plan along with your master plan and your other various plans and look at what your capital expenditures are going to be over the next six-year period. And each year, then, you have the opportunity to touch this document. And if, and as you've been going through your year, decide whether those elements that you've got identified in the years that you have them identified make sense. Are there other needs that are, that have become more pressing? Have we gotten additional funding? Do we have an opportunity to get additional funding? And so each year, you have the ability to do that through your CIP process is another dovetailing document that goes through this. So hopefully, that answers your questions.
Thank you. And Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I continue? I just, I, I want to say that I personally would love to see a splash pad. We did look quite a bit at the, the cost of that and the ongoing maintenance. And, you know, it's a, it's a constant back and forth. And it's, I, I know we have a potential for at least initial funding of, of a splash pad through one of our agreements with the medical marijuana businesses, but it is, I believe that's going to go through, the funding for that, any kind of funding for that is going to go through a different vehicle rather than through this, this Parks Board thing. So it's gonna, it's gonna come through. I can't remember the initials all of a sudden.
C A B.
C A B, thank you. And so potentially, if that's, if that's, if it's, if we're able to get it, you know, I would love it. It would be fantastic. I think many, most families in the, in the community would get a, get a kick out of using it quite often, so. So it's not out of the question whatsoever and I would love to see it eventually. But it was definitely a big number when it came down to how much the ongoing cost would be. And so that's, that's why I didn't make it onto this particular plan at this time.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. And, yeah, and if we look at page 26, it's 10% of people who responded wanted the splash pad. And this would have been where we had that in the council chambers and everyone was given a mythical $40 to spend in various places. And when it added up, it was 10% went to the splash pad and 24% was actually the highest for the community center. So, you know, it's like anything else that we have to budget, we only have a certain amount of money. So, all right.
Your Honor? But it's about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, I've served now, I think this is my third or fourth term, second or third, fourth term in a row on Parks and Rec. And my sense is, to Councilman Bliss's point, I don't know that there's any diminution in the support for the idea of a splash pad. I think people's eyes start to glaze over when you, you talk about it and they glow and they get that, that idea that really would be something very special to bring into our community. I think what you saw here, I don't think it was an either/or choice. At least that was, that was not my impression anyway. It was, we've got X number of dollars dealing within a certain framework. What do we need? And also partly driven somewhere in the back of this was we're going to have to begin replacing a few of these structures and expanding what we've got as we go along. As Counselor Rorbeck was saying, it would be nice to have another facility or two. That, that's, that's a need we can meet quickly and, 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 and take care of a good number of people's interests. So, but no, I don't, I don't think there's any, I guess it just really depends on the day of the week and how the questions ask. But no, I agree with Councilman Bliss amenities such as something like a water park. There are some technical issues that have to be dealt with, you know, the ongoing costs and maintenance. But, but no, that'd really be something nice to bring to the community. Something special for the families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Councilman Corbett and then Councilman Bliss too. I think, and I understand the costs associated with it. Well, I mean, I didn't read the hard numbers, but, I mean, Councilman Bliss had this vision, how many years ago? Three, four years ago or something? And when he first brought it up, we were like, what are you talking about? But I think I give him credit. I think this is, I think it's a fantastic idea. I know Sterling Heights just put theirs in. I mean, there's this pretty huge, that's a different city. St. Clair Shores has always had theirs, but I agree with the other two. I think we should really take a hard look at it.
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
And I just want to clarify on the 10% thing. That was 10% of the people that were physically there at that town hall, of which, you know, you're not going to get as many of the young parents who would have kids that would go to a splash pad just, you know, given work hours and availability of childcare and all of that. So I think we have to take into consideration. In the virtual surveys that, that have been done over the years, it was exceedingly popular. And I'm not saying that we have to do it and I'm certainly not saying that, you know, we shouldn't have a discussion as to whether or not to put in a pavilion versus having a splash pad and the ongoing cost. I just think that the debate, it's not in this master plan. The, the option of saying, we'd like to do this. Here's a North Star for something we'd like to do that may add value to the community. I would just personally like to see something like that. Or again, even like outdoor exercise equipment and things for our seniors. Like there's, there's a lot of amenities that we could be talking about here, not just a splash pad. And some of this investment that's currently set into this master plan, I think, you know, there are options for it that I'd like to see included either as an either/or or as different options. You know, and let's not forget with the splash pad, you know, we do have the, you know, Red Oaks Water Park in town, but there's so many residents who can't afford it. Even when we stepped in with the, the grant voucher program, it's still, you know, made it difficult just given the cost to be able to get in. And we're about to head into, or head into, we're probably in a recession right now. And so part of the challenge is we have limited budget to be able to achieve things. But the challenge for our residents are that they have very limited budget to be able to do fun things as a family. And so a family that might have gone to the Red Oaks Water Park multiple times over the course of next summer or the summer after that may not be able to this year, given the economy. So it's something we have to take into account and I don't think it's as present in this plan as I'd like it to be. But again, this is something that we can edit and revise. I just wanted to make sure it was a part of the discussion. And I'd love to see a little bit of information as far as like the stack ranking of some of these goals, you know, and that could be furnished after the fact. I'll be voting for it. I just think this is an ongoing discussion that's critical for the future of our park system.
Your Honor?
Council Rorback?
I do want to note, Mr. Bliss just said that there was only, the only time people that 10%. That was not the only, the 10% of the people who responded included the folks that came in person to the open house in addition to the online survey that, which 439 people responded to. So it is not, it wasn't the only one. I just want to make sure that we, because there was a second survey that was available to folks. It's on page 26 of the master plan on the second column there. It says, online survey. We did make sure that it was available and pushed it out heavily on social media and other ways to have as many people as possible to respond to it. So we didn't just have like the 20 people who arrived in person that one night.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I actually had a question that is not about the splash pad and that is about Wildwood. The replaced, the playscape got replaced and I'm looking at the accessibility ranking and it's still a one. I'm just wondering if, or Mr. Almas, if someone could just maybe give a really quick how that all works?
Yeah, Your Honor, the, I don't think that, I noticed that as well. I don't think that that was updated. That park was new, newly constructed, what, late last year? And, and then opened to the public early this year. So I don't think that that was updated and probably should be corrected.
And we can make that change.
Okay, thank you. That was just, that was, I mean, the whole thing or the bulk of it seems to be accessible. So I just think that would increase the ranking. And then I had a question sort of dovetailing on that. So when I look at this, most of our parks seem to be a one. Is our goal then to, Rosie's is actually a three. So is our goal to slowly move everything that's a one to a two and then a two to a three? And eventually we're not just going to walk in and say, oh, we're going to go to 12 Cherry and change it from a one to a five? Is that the plan is to step up everybody some way?
I mean, I don't know, Corey, if you want to talk to that. I think it makes sense to do it that way, to do gradual improvements throughout the city so that you are making progress equitably. But I don't know, of course, you had anything you want to add to that?
Well, part of our park improvement plan and as funding is available, and I'll give Edison as an example. We're preparing to come to council with a new place structure for Edison Park. And in order to get a grant for that, we were going to be obligated to put in a parking lot just to the, install a concrete or asphalt parking lot just to the north of the Bald Diamond there. But the cost associated with it was not beneficial to the city. But that would increase our chances of getting the grant. But we still want to install and that park desperately needs a new place structure that was removed because it's safety and obsolescence. But, but as we construct that park and build that new place structure rather, we're still going to provide from the sidewalk to the place structure accessibility. Now, whether or not that meets the three or the four, the five criteria for accessibility, that, that it's not just going to go from a, from a one to a two to a three to a four. It'll instantaneously go to a four or five with the place, place structure and accessibility.
Okay. Okay, so the goal is to do a gradual, but there may be times where a change does pop it up a lot.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the other question I had with this was, so when we look at our playgrounds and we look at our parks and Ms. Bush had mentioned the, the school and doing something in conjunction, you know, between the city and the school. And I know when my kids were young, we used to say, we're going to the park. And what we really meant was we were going to the local school. We use that as a playground. I'm looking at the list here and I just want to make sure. The Four Corners Montessori, that's the St. Vincent's Church. The, the playgrounds are there because I had thought they were removed. I just wanted to, Council Rorback, do you know?
They have movable playground equipment on the grounds. And I believe a plan to put in some more permanent things, but right now they are modular playground equipment. I believe that is in place right now.
Okay, so if I take my kids there on the weekend, there's nothing there? It's only during school hours, is that?
No, I think that's out all the time.
Oh, it is out all the time? Okay, and so, so even though it's movable, if it's out all the time, that counts? Is that right, Mr. Almas?
I don't know, Mayor.
Okay. All right, I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that it was, was updated. I know Mr. Gennings had said something about theirs, whatever. I just want to make sure that, that everything is on there. Okay, any other comments from council on the other discussion?
Your Honor?
Sherman?
Before you call for a vote, I just want to clarify the motion that's on the floor. And, and my understanding of the motion is to approve a resolution to adopt the recreation master plan. Is that, Mr. Gennings, do you agree? Maker of the motion, do you agree with that?
Yes, Mr. Sherman.
Does support agree?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor? Clerk, yes, please.
I also believe it was to authorize the staff to submit it to the Department of Natural Resources.
Okay. All right.
It's for me. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, if there is no more discussion, then clerk, can you please take a real call though?
Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, excuse me, Mayor Protem Soltis?
Aye.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes, Ms. Garry. Thank you. Okay, so that was, hold on. That was for the recreation master plan. So next up, meeting open to the public. This is just open to the public on any topic. So if anyone wants to speak on any topic, this would be the time.
Mayor Graffstein?
Clerk, yes?
I do have a comment after everybody's done commenting.
Thank you. All right, before the clerk reads her comment, is there any, any comments for anyone else in the public? Who wants to say anything? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and have the clerk read in the one that was mailed in, emailed in.
Okay, this is from Elizabeth Blumenberg. To mayor and council members, I want to comment on the culture of our city. Our city is lucky to have Melissa Marsh as our city manager. She embodies the ideal public servant. She is incredibly talented, fiercely dedicated and fiercely listens to residents. Unfortunately, she inherited a very flawed, flawed culture within our city employees, many of whom do not live in Madison Heights. Our city has a culture of inaction and paternalist approach towards residents' wants and needs. Our city isn't a huge municipality or a large multinational organization. Its small size should be an advantage to quickly implementing change. Transforming this culture will take every elected leader holding not only the city employees to the highest ethical and professional standards, but also themselves. The elected city leader should understand best practices for urban planning, civil engineering, library science, et cetera, and should hold city employees accountable when those standards are not met. I understand this is a lot of responsibility, but the residents of Madison Heights are depending on you. Conversely, it is not the city employees' job. We have a larger vision for our city that falls on the city council and mayor to develop. I understand there are financial limitations to what can be accomplished. The city has a cohort of motivated residents that should be effectively utilized to better meet the needs of a rapidly changing economy where we will require a willingness to take risks, implement innovative zoning practices and reduce obstacles to small-scale entrepreneurs. Finally, Madison Heights is often a forgotten corner of Oakland County and that needs to change. City leaders must reach out to other inner-ring suburbs in Oakland County to learn what has worked for their communities and to provide cost-effective services and build new programs and events together. Despite my critiques to Madison Heights with its grid, grid design, walkability and affordable prices as much potential, I'm calling for every city leader to strive to be better in 2021, take more classes, build more relationships, meet more residents. We can do this, but only if everyone puts in the effort. We cannot rely on the talents of a few or else our city will experience another decade of stagnation or even worse decline. Thank you, Elizabeth Blumenberg.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Blumenberg, for your comments. All right, so meeting is closed to the public. We will go on with the agenda. Next up is D reports, number one, city manager authorization to distribute the 2020 master plan. Mrs. Marsh, your report?
Yes, that's November 17th meeting. The Planning Commission unanimously approved the recommendation to recommend to city council to authorize staff to distribute the final draft master plan to the neighboring communities and reviewing agencies as required by state law. Once released, these agencies have 63 days to review the draft and share any comments with the city of Madison Heights. If city council determines that the master plan is ready to be distributed, then a motion authorizing distribution would be appropriate tonight. If the council determines that the master plan is not ready for distribution, then a motion directing the master plan back to the Planning Commission to address any issues would be in order. Ultimately, approval authority remains with the Planning Commission and is currently scheduled after the review period and public hearing on February the 16th of 2021.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Council Rorback?
I move that the city council approves the, authorizes the distribution of the mass, of the master plan. I apologize.
Okay, thank you for your support.
Your Honor?
Councilman Bliss?
My second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded their discussion.
Your Honor?
Before we do discussion, I was just going to ask if Jill wanted to make a comment. So give us a quick overview.
I can give you a quick overview. And I'll be brief because I know you have a lot of other things on your agenda tonight. Just to give you a little bit of the highlight of the process, I did include with your packet a memo that provides an overview of the entire plan. But just to refresh your memories, we started this back a year ago with a joint visioning session with council, planning commission, DDA, Downtown Development Authority, and I believe the Parks and Recreation Board was there as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals. It was a, we had a great turnout and it really set the stage for a lot of the discussions that followed. And they were also very instrumental in leading our discussions with the Parks and Recreation Board as well, as you know. So out of that meeting, we talked about a couple of important things. We talked about housing, we talked about recreation, we talked about the city's commercial corridors, and we talked about non-motorized transportation. Walkability is really important to the community and it was recognized at the very beginning when we first started our conversations. The plan includes quite a section on the existing conditions in the city in terms of demographics. And we had a market assessment that's included as well. Obviously, some things have changed from that market assessment. We know that we did not anticipate COVID in the last nine months of that and we know that this is going to be difficult as we move forward. But I think a lot of the essentials that were included in that will continue to remain valid. And those would be the things that we were talking about at the very beginning, including walkability, including recreation, including improving the appearance of the commercial corridor. And those would be the things that we were talking about at the very beginning, including walkability, including recreation, um, including improving the appearance of the commercial corridors. Those will all be things that we can do to help strengthen the city, um, today and into the future. Um, we did have public input, including, um, not only the Recreation Plan Survey that we talked about a little while ago in the open house. We also had a consumer spending survey where we had over 300 participants in that. And we had a virtual open house because we weren't able to do one in person due to the, um, COVID pandemic restrictions on that. It's interesting that all of the input that we did receive was very consistent with that which we got from the joint meeting, um, to kick things off. So, um, through those survey comments, there really weren't a lot of outliers or, um, things that we had never heard before. Um, so that's, I think, a testament to, um, the involvement of the elected and appointed officials and the connections that they have within the community that they are listening and they're sharing that information. Um, your last plan was adopted in 1990. It's been updated a little bit in terms of just your future land use map, but this was the first whole, um, revision to it since that time. Um, we looked at the goals and objectives from the early plan and tweaked them a little bit, just to make them, um, a little bit more understandable for today and for moving forward in terms of what the city is looking to achieve in the next 10 to 15 years. Um, we add some chapters on resiliency and sustainability, arts and culture. Um, what else did we add? Um, in the redevelopment sites, the Downtown Development Authority, we recapture recap, um, updated the thoroughfare plan, and we also updated the neighborhood section. Um, in the 1990 master plan, there was an analysis done that broke the city into 13 different neighborhoods. And I just really was captivated by this idea. And the idea of breaking down the community into neighborhoods and not in a way to isolate those neighborhoods and make them feel that it's one neighborhood against another neighborhood, but a way to fundamentally communicate, um, what needs to be communicated and activate folks at the local level. Um, we find it much more difficult today to do any public input. Um, but what really gets people to turn out is a development project on the street, just, you know, on the corner, right down the road from them. That's when people get to come out. And so I think the master plan is a good example of that. Um, things that happen across town, things that are going to happen 10 to 15 years from now, that might be hard to, to really get a, um, an understanding of, of what that means, not only for me today, but how that might impact somebody 10 years from now. Um, and so I think, I, I hope that as one of the next steps after the plans adopted and, and implementation begins, is that the city can really take a look at that and make that your own in terms of, um, how we can utilize these neighborhoods. How do we tap into the people that live, um, the people like Ms. Bush that was, that was speaking about the area south of Lincoln? Um, how do we activate those people? And then use them as a way to communicate. So when we have, um, we want information from them, we can talk to that person in that neighborhood and say, can you get the word out from your neighborhood? This is what this means to you. But have that be an ongoing thing so that when somebody, when something like COVID, you know, God forbid this happens again. Um, but this, we talk about this in the Sustainability and Resiliency Chapter Two. You know, knowing where those vulnerable people are in our community, what kind of resources do they need? Um, when city hall is closed or the power goes out and I can't get online, how do I find out what's happening? How do I find out where the resources are? Utilizing that neighborhood unit, I think, can really, um, further, um, enhance the offerings that Madison Heights has. That's one of the things that, that we heard from everybody is how much they really enjoyed living in this community and wanting to keep them, um, able to do so for many years to come. Um, I'll get off my soapbox about the, the neighborhoods. I, I just think that's a really great, um, could be a really great approach for your community. Um, the plan also includes some redevelopment sites. Um, we are working with you on becoming redevelopment-ready through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's program. Um, and one of the steps is to identify those three redevelopment sites. We have some concepts in there that's certainly not, um, what things are going to look like in the future, but it's a, it's a representation that tells the development community, this is what we have in mind here. Um, again, I guess maybe to summarize that, this conversation, the master plan is our 15 to 20-year vision for the future. It's a guideline. It's a policy, provides guidance for policy decisions by city council, by the planning commission, and, um, it informs the zoning ordinance. You'll see if you looked in the, um, if you read through the whole plan, that there's a zoning plan in the implementation chapter. And then what the zoning plan is, is a, um, a table that shows the alignment between your master plan, your future land use designations, and your zoning map. And the zoning districts are what guide, or it's your legal framework that guides your development. So we want those things to be, um, in full alignment. So we have a couple of, of new land use designation areas that show up on the map. And we also have a corresponding recommendation that you create some zoning districts to go with those. Um, so that's how that works. Um, again, this is, um, your, um, opportunity to send this out to the adjacent communities for the review as required by state law. Um, it comes back, goes to the planning commission, where the planning commission holds the public hearing, they'll take action, and then city council is also able to take action as well. Um, so with that, um, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, Mr. Bliss, you wanted to say something?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, um, I'm really excited about this plan. Um, honestly, you know, we talk about the city of progress, but this is the first master plan in decades. Yeah, we just kept renewing the, the old one, and so this was a great opportunity for us to say, what does the city look like in 15 years? You know, what are the things that we can do? What are the designations that we can create that will help to, you know, give our staff the tools that they need to be able to bring us to that end state? And so, uh, I think what we've come up with is really strong. Uh, if anybody looks at the, uh, future land use map, I think they'll get a really good idea of the planning commission's vision for the city, uh, because there's a lot of added flexibility in it. Uh, one of those new dis- designations that was mentioned is this mixed-use innovation, which allows, uh, you know, it, most of it's in areas that used to be, uh, you know, industrial zones. And so what that new designation allows is for some flexibility, uh, when new businesses, new developments, redevelopments are able to come in. Um, it, it really allows it to be a little more streamlined. They're not going to have to get any, you know, a, a, appeals or anything to be able to get moving. And so there is some nice flexibility there. Uh, I think every city ends up somewhere, but not every city ends up somewhere on purpose. And this plan allows us to get somewhere on purpose. You know, I think these changes are absolutely long-term, but based on some of the discussions that we had, uh, with the planning commission and some of the public feedback we've got, I think some of these changes could be noticeable to our residents sooner as opposed to later. And a lot of this is, you know, that future state, what do we want to do? So it's going to be, you know, the onus is going to be on, you know, the applicable boards and, and us as a city council to be able to make the required changes to be able to adopt the future that this plan entails. Uh, but I think it was really good, and hats off to, to our staff, uh, hats off to, uh, the planning commission. Really proud to serve with them, uh, is phenomenal discussions. And also appreciate everybody who, uh, you know, filled out the survey, attended some of the meetings and, you know, just made their voice heard as to what they want this future to be. Uh, if you haven't done so yet, take a look at that future land use map. Uh, it's really, really good indication of where we're heading, uh, and I'm incredibly proud of that.
Ms. Graffstein?
Yeah, Geddings?
Could I ask a question to Jill?
Sure.
Um, Jill, Monroe Park, I think you listed as a mini park versus a neighborhood park. Could you explain that to me?
I would have to go back and look at that, um, and the designation, but I can make a note of it. And if it's something that needs to get changed, we can absolutely do that.
No, I, I wasn't saying the needed to be changed. I was just wondering the philosophy for mini park versus neighborhood park.
It's typically based on the size of the park.
Okay.
And so smaller park could be the neighborhood or the mini park, really intending to serve a much smaller area where a neighborhood park is going to serve a little bit more people.
That's what I thought. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Your Honor.
Uh, Councilor Warburg?
All right, yes. Um, I just want to say, you know, there's, what's really great about this, and Mr. Bliss said it, you know, we have, this is the first time we've had the opportunity really to, um, do the full, the full thing, the full redevelopment of this whole master plan. And what I hear over and over and over again from our residents is, you know, you guys talk about all this stuff, stuff's gonna happen, and then nothing ever does. And, um, and I think that is a testament to the fact that we kind of just did this incremental and, you know, times being what they were over the last 10 years or so have been, you know, it's not been easy to, we've had, the city has had to make really tough decisions about a lot of things. And I'm excited about this plan because this is our opportunity. Like, because we now have this on the slate, we have this as a public document, as something that, this is what we're going to be held to, like, for our future. This is our motion. This is where we're headed. Um, it's a really, it's a really exciting thing that we can now point to as all, all of us elected members of this council to say, look, you want to see this? This is what we said we're going to do. And now we can, we can go back and say, and now we are going to check up these objectives and actually get there and actually make that progress. I'm excited to, to see the public comment.
Great, thank you. All right, is there any other, uh, conversation, any other comments from council? All right, seeing none. Believe there was a motion on, so clerk, do you please?
There's a motion.
Can you please take the, uh, could you actually, could you restate the motion and, uh, thank you.
One second. Uh, motion by Councilor Warburg, seconded by Councilman Bliss to authorize the ci- city to distribute the draft 2020 master plan to the neighboring communities and reviewing agencies as required by law.
Thank you. All right, can you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Councilor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes, Miss Carries, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your input. Uh, next up, item D two for the Finance Director Designated Assessor Interlocal Agreement with Oakland County. Ms. Marsh, your report?
Public Act 660 of 2018 requires all Michigan counties to name a designated assessor for each respective county to ensure all cities and townships are in substantial compliance with the General Property Tax Act. On November the 19th, Oakland County named Dave Eber, the Equalization Director of Oakland County, the designated accessor, assessor for Oakland County. To be compliant with Public Act 660, an interlocal agreement is to be executed by the majority of cities and townships in the county, the County Board of Commissioners, and the designated assessor. Staff and I recommend that city council approve the interlocal agreement with Oakland County for the designated assessor for the time period of January 1, 2021 through December 31st, 2025, as required by Public Act 660 of 2018, and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Corbett?
Yes, uh, thank you. I have moved that the, uh, council, uh, concur with staff and approve the interlocal agreement with Oakland County for the designated, um, assessor for a period from January the first, 2021 through December 31st, 2025, as required by Public Act 660 of 2018.
Great, thank you. Their support.
Ms. Graffstein?
Mr. Geddings?
I'll be glad to support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm not sure if the motion needs to be amended, but they need to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign.
Corbett?
Yeah, with your permission, I'll include that in the motion if the second will agree.
Geddings?
Yes, ma'am, it's good.
Thank you. Uh, motion has been amended and seconded. Is there any discussion from council? All right, seeing none, clerk, could you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Uh, next, D three, we have the DPS Director Concurring Resolution for the Great Lakes Water Authority Updated Industrial Pretreatment Prevention Rules. Uh, Mrs. Marsh, your report?
As part of our service agreement with the Great Lakes Water Authority, also known as GLWA, the city of Madison Heights previously adopted a set of industrial pretreat programs or IPP rules. Federal law requires GLWA to have an IPP to manage industrial waste entering the Water Resources Recovery Facility. GLWA maintains a set of rules by which it implements and enforces the IPP, and federal law requires municipalities to send flow to the WRRF to adopt these rules. On November 13th of 2019, the GLWA Board of Directors adopted an updated set of rules, including adding language regarding the regulation of PFAS compounds. Pursuant to the Municipal Sewage Disposal, Water Supply and Solid Waste Management System Act, the city of Madison Heights must adopt a concurring resolution of the updated IPP rules. Therefore, staff and I recommend that council adopt the attached resolution concurring with the updated IPP rules and regulations with subsequent amendments as necessary.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Councilor Warburg?
I move that, uh, we adopt the, uh, what is it called? The, the, uh, concurring resolution of the updated IPP rules, uh, with subsequent, subsequent amendments as necessary.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor, I'll support, and that's why I wasn't going to touch it.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there any discussion? Motion has been made and seconded.
Your Honor?
Mrs. Soltis?
Uh, is, yeah, is there somebody from Great Lakes online or on virtual?
No, there, no, there isn't.
No, because I had some questions about the the reduction in, uh, percentages of, uh, the chemicals.
I can follow up with them and get your answers if you want to tell them now or email them to me later.
Well, I, there, there's, they made some adjustments in, uh, copper and cyanide. Um, it's been a long time since I had chemistry, but there's two others down at the bottom. You'll see where they reduce the amount. I, I just want to know what, what, why are they reducing the amount now? And why has it taken so long that they had them up higher? Because a couple of these are even more than 50% reduction. Uh, cyanide was 4.0, I guess, the limit, and now it's 1.5 copper, uh, which is a real detriment as well. Uh, it was seven, now it's three, so let's.
I can follow up with them and get back to council unless Cory almost happens to know, but I'm thinking he doesn't know off the top of his head.
Well, uh, unless, and, and I think the, the idea of Eagle, uh, and what they are doing over the course of, of a time for, specific timeframe, uh, is that they're becoming more stringent. And I, and I don't know if that's what you're referring to, is the, the allowable tolerance is becoming more stringent, so.
Right.
So.
Right, and, but I want to know why it's taking them so long. Why all of a sudden now do they change it in 2020?
Yeah, that's a question for, uh, for the federal.
And, and because some of the, the research that I did on it, um, the numbers should even be lower, so I, I'm really uh, concerned about, uh, about those numbers.
Yeah, I'll follow up with GLWA. All right, thank you, Mr. Marsh. Are there any other comments, any other discussion? Mr. Soltis, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing no further discussion, uh, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Vote yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Soltis?
No.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Uh, next up, the fourth and city clerk resolution authorizing deferment of annual business licenses renewal fee. Mrs. Marsh, your report?
Yes, as outlined in our city charter, the city's clerk's office is in the process of starting the 2021 annual business renewal process. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we propose that the city implement a one- Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we propose that the city implement a one-time-only business license annual renewal deferment program until June the 1st of 2021 to help out our businesses. The city clerk has researched, searched the ordinance and confirmed with legal counsel that although the annual license date has to be renewed is specific, a deferment could still be implemented. This deferment will not alter the business's obligations to renew their license, but merely defer the payment and push it out the renewal for six months. Staff and I recommend that City Council adopt the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to issue orders permitting businesses that experience hardship due to COVID-19, a temporary deferment of their annual business license renewal fees.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution that authorizes the city manager to issue orders that permit businesses that are experiencing hardship due to the pandemic, a temporary deferment of their annual business license renewal fee.
Thank you. Their support?
Your Honor?
Corbett?
Yes, support, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right.
Well, Your Honor, just, just a quick observation that it's, you know, it's obviously not a great, in most cases, it's not a great deal of money. But it certainly puts our heart and our, our efforts in the right place, considering there are a number of businesses that, that are really getting beat up. So I'm, I'm preaching to the choir here, but, but I think it's, it's, I think it's a good idea. It's, it's something that we can share a little pain and at least let the business community know where we're at. So, that's all, thank you, ma'am.
Couldn't have said it better myself, Mr. Corbett, thank you. Any other discussion from any other members? All right, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Counselor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, D5, City Clerk, The Reappointment to the Planning Commission. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, Planning Commission member Grant Sylvester's term expired August 31st of 2020. Since his term's expiration, he has indicated that he would like to be reappointed and has completed the necessary paperwork. He has continued to attend the Planning Commission meetings and the open period is for three years and would expire on August the 31st, 2023, and it is a mayor's appointment.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion for my appointment to reappoint Grant Sylvester to the Planning Commission?
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
For years. Councilman Corbett?
Uh, let Mr. Bliss, it's, please. I'll yield to Mr. Bliss.
Mr. Bliss?
Okay, sure, Your Honor. I move that we accept the mayor's appoint, or reappointment of Grant Sylvester to the open three-year term for the Planning Commission that expires 8/31/23.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Counselor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, D6, this was the item that was added on regarding the fire union. Mrs. Marsh, can you report?
No, no, I don't. I can answer any questions on it if anyone has any.
All right, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor, I move that the council approved the agreement negotiated between the Fire, Fireman's Union and the city of Madison Heights. I believe it's a one-year period with a 2% increase baked in.
Thank you. Your support?
Your Honor.
Counselor Warburg?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Counselor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Great, that is it for reports. Next up, we have bids and awards and purchases. First up, F1, City Manager Agreement for Information Technology Support Services with BPI. Ms. Marsh, can you report?
Yes, in 2014, city council approved a three-year contract for information technology support services with BPI with an option to extend on an annual basis. We've extended that contract for the three years beyond the initial period. This past fall, with the city assistance of the city's Information Technology Advisory Committee, also known as ITAC, we issued a request for proposal for these services. The ITAC committee reviewed the proposals and conducted an initial analysis of the five proposals received, including but not limited to similar prior experience provided IT services to municipalities, proposed staffing, transition approach, and projected cost for the initial three-year term of the contract, resulting in interviews with two of the five companies, Innotron LLC and BPI. Following the interviews, the evaluation committee conducted, concluded that either company can meet the city's needs and ultimately voted three to two to recommend to City Council to retain the services of BPI for its IT support services for a one-year period while evaluating their services. This contract can be extended for two additional one-year periods. Based on this recommendation of ITAC, I respectfully request that council award the contract for information technology support services to BPI for an initial one-year at the base cost of $199,968 each year, with an option to extend thereafter upon written agreement of the parties for two one-year periods. And James and Beth from BPI are present tonight.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Corbett?
Yeah, I would move that the council concur with the recommendation of staff and award the contract for information technology support to BPI for an initial one-year period at a base cost of $199,968 each year with an option to extend thereafter upon written agreement of the parties for two one-year periods.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Counselor Warburg?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
Yeah, so this was a really tight call and a very long discussion with ITAC. Myself and the chairman of ITAC were the two no votes in the, in the three to two split. Part of that is, I think there's been some challenges that I think BPI is really pushing to overcome in this new contract. But it was really tough for us to see, and I'll just speak for me. It was really tough for me to see that, you know, things were going to be different. We've already been burned with a contractor where we renewed the agreement early without putting it out to bid. At least in this case, we did put it out to bid. And I think that the one-year agreement allows for BPI to show that some of the challenges that our staff had in the service agreement are behind them. It also allows them to show their forward thinking. Some of the deficiencies that we identified were, you know, the lack of a true strategy for shifting into the cloud. You know, we want to see, you know, a plan on that. We want to have real discussions, not just with staff, but also with ITAC and hopefully bringing ideas and concepts that, you know, we as a council can adopt into our strategic planning cycle for next year. And so, you know, I just want to, you know, cautiously, you know, adopt this one-year agreement and encourage BPI to, you know, show, show us that this was the right move and to prove that, you know, those one-year extensions that we can make, you know, as additional to this agreement will be no brainers, that, you know, some of the issues that we've had are behind us and, you know, we've got a strong vision for the future with this partnership.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? The other discussion? Council? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
I vote no.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Counselor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
Um, I will vote yes. Motion carries, thank you. Up next, item F2, DPS Director, The Leasing Agreement with Enterprise Fleet. Mrs. Marsh, can you report?
Yes, as part of the fiscal year 2020 strategic plan, city council approved a goal to maintain a reliable citywide fleet with an action item to review financing or possible leasing options. Therefore, staff has been exploring the possibility of leasing through Enterprise Fleet vehicles. Vehicles reviewed are passenger vehicles such as the DPS pickup trucks, detective vehicles, and inspection utility vehicles. Besides more frequently replacing these vehicles, the intended benefit of leasing is based on the city's purchasing position and enterprise's selling position. So the city can utilize its tax-exempt purchasing status and take advantage of cooperative bidding, all of which allows us to buy these vehicles significantly under retail cost. On the sale end, Enterprise has access to a nationwide network allowing them to identify the highest market for a specific vehicle. Thus, working together, we can materialize the return on investment and sell these vehicles before they start to become a drain on our maintenance cost. Typically, we run a vehicle into the ground until the doors are ready to fall off, and that's not always the most fiscally responsible thing to do. So as this is a financing method that the city has never used in the past, we've initially identified four vehicles that are currently budgeted for full replacement, and we want to use these for a trial period. These are vehicles 125, 430, 457, and 702, so a DPS vehicle, a police vehicle, a fire vehicle, and a regular passenger car. If this program proves to be a success, it will be expanded, and if it proves not to be beneficial, we will terminate it. Staff and I recommend that council approve this initial leasing agreement between Enterprise Fleet and the city of Madison Heights and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city. Funds are budgeted and available for these vehicles to currently be purchased, and that will cover the leasing period. And we do have a representative with us tonight from Enterprise Fleet. I think he's still on, Eric, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilman Corbett?
Um, I would move that the council approve the initial leasing arrangement between Enterprise Fleet and the city of Madison Heights and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city. Funds for this project are budgeted and available in the current fiscal year.
Thank you. Is there support?
Ms. Graffstein?
Gaddings?
I will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. There are discussion, and we have a representative, so if there's no discussion, are there any questions for Enterprise, either one, council?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
Just option C, I guess. I just want to commend our staff for this outside-the-box idea. You know, this is the type of innovative concept that, you know, I think we owe it to ourselves and our residents to, to try. If it can save us some money long-term, it'll be awesome. And if it doesn't, you know, we just, you know, kind of lose a small cycle and in order to find out whether or not it works. The projections seem good. This is a really good program, I think, for us that'll pay dividends. So I appreciate Ms. Marsh and, you know, the entire team that worked on this. It's a great idea.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Ms. Graff, Ms. Graffstein?
Ms. Gaddings?
Um, Ms. Marsh, could you tell me if a lot of other cities are embarking on this idea?
Yes.
If you happen to know?
I do know. So originally, when we started talking about this as strategic planning, it was because I had heard that the Michigan State Police leases most of their policing vehicles. That isn't an option that's available to the city. However, Enterprise does have a cooperative deal which we could go with them on, and they cover GLWA, the Great Lakes Water Authority, the county of Livingston, Harrison Township, the city of Detroit, the city of Clausen, the list goes on, Hazel Park, Fraser.
I'll send the report.
Burndale, Dearborn Heights. That's just to name a few around this general area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Your Honor?
Ms. Soltis?
Yeah, I'm glad to see that, too. Enterprise is here in the city, Madison Heights, they're on John R. And when I had a car that wasn't working all the time, I, I used them a lot. So they, they helped out there. They do great customer service, so I'm glad to see that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Counselor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes, motion carries, thank you. And our final is F3, City Manager Agreement for Feasibility Study and Design Services for Phase 1.5, The Active Adult Center and Library-City Hall Remodel with Partners in Architecture. Mrs. Marsh, can you report?
As discussed at last week's City Council Strategic Planning Workshop, we recommend that City Council approve a scope of services agreement with partners in architecture for a Phase 1.5 feasibility and design services for the Active Adult Center. This phase will include a detailed review of each of the existing buildings, so that would be City Hall, the library, and the Active Adult Centers' 10-year capital improvement needs with cost, design refinement of the main campus centralized scheme, which would result in the Active Adult Center being relocated to the main campus, and a cost comparison between the projected current building CIP approach and the potential new main campus centralized approach, with the pros and cons, including a life cycle and ongoing operations needs. So this is really the last missing piece of the puzzle to allow us to make an informed and educated decision over which way is fiscally going to be best for the city long-term. Staff and I recommend that City Council approve Partners in Architecture to perform a feasibility study and design services for Phase 1.5 of the Active Adult Center relocation and library-city hall remodeling for an amount not to exceed $28,500. This will also require a motion for a budget amendment of $28,500 to account 101-758-8180, and that will require a supermajority.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of City Council?
Your Honor?
Ms. Bliss?
I move that we do a budget amendment allocating $28,500 to account 101-758-818000.
Thank you. Is there support?
Ms. Graffstein?
Gaddings?
I will support the motion.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion from council? All right, seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Counselor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
Vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have G ordinances.
Oh, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Yeah, we need to approve the council.
Your Honor, if I may, I move that we approve the bid award to, or another bid award. I approve that we, the Partners in Architect Feasibility Study and Design Services for Phase 1.5, The Active Adult Center Relocation and City Hall and Library Remodel for an amount not to exceed $28,500.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Yes.
Oh.
There are court it? All right, motions has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Sherman?
Since the money has now been appropriated in the budget, a simple majority is required to pass the motion.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Any other discussion? All right, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Counselor Warburg?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Graffstein?
I vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next is.
Next is G1, City Manager Ordinance 2164, the ordinance amendment to update the process to allow for electronics submittal of sealed bids. This is the first reading. This is Marsh, your report.
Under the current Madison Heights Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 11, Section 2-246, the city requires hard copies of sealed bid documents for acquiring goods, services, and construction for public use requiring a formal bid. This ordinance further sets forth the threshold of purchasing limits for formal bids at $10,000 and a minimum quotation threshold for 2,500. The COVID-19 health crisis necessitated that we offer as many online services and options as possible, especially as our offices close to the public and the world transitioned to a work-from-home model. Therefore, it became essential to revise the requirement for paper copies of sealed bids as the only acceptable forms under the purchasing ordinance. The attached red line ordinance presented to counsel tonight allows for the electronic acceptance as long as the bid's security, authenticity, and confidentiality remain the same as through paper submittals. Through the Mitten Purchasing Program, we can accept sealed electronic bids to protect information being presented. In addition to this necessary amendment, staff and I have reviewed the entire ordinance section and would like to request that City Council also change the threshold limits for formal bids from 10,000 to 15,000 and the minimum quotation for bids from 2,500 to 5,000. If City Council concurs, we would recommend you approve this ordinance amendment upon first reading.
Thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve ordinance 2164 on first reading.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilor Rorback?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any, this is the first reading. Is there any discussion on this reading?
Your Honor.
Corbett?
Just to to mimic some comments from Mr. Bliss a little earlier, this is, this is a really kind of a nice innovative looking for a opportunity to not only cut costs, but deal with the pandemic and increase efficiency. So thank you very much to the staff, in particular, the modest-looking clerk there who's not looking up as she is. It was a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, if you could please take a roll call vote?
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Mayor Grassstein?
Vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. And that is it for the regular meeting. We have just the minutes to approve. Does anyone from council want to make a motion to approve the regular city council minute meetings from November 23rd?
Your Honor, I move to approve the minutes from the November 23rd regular meeting of council.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Your second?
Ms. Craftstein?
Mr. Gennings?
Second.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes from November 23rd. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Potem Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gennings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Grassstein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. The regular meeting is now complete. This would be our last meeting of the year. So for the last time this year, I invite closing comments from counsel, starting with Councilman Corbett.
Thank you very much. We've had a, I'm surprised. It seemed like the meeting was longer, but it wasn't so bad, I guess. But it was fairly intense and a fair, pretty heavy agenda this evening in terms, it was dense. It had a lot of reading behind it. But so, but I think the group did fairly well. I want to just wish the council and the community well. It's, it's been a hell of a year, and I think we're all pretty glad to put it in the rearview mirror. Was thinking earlier today of the friends that we've lost over the year, just besides the normal things, of course, the loss due to illness. But, but better days are coming. I always believe that, and it's a great community. So we'll do well, and I look forward to seeing all of you next year. That's all. Thank you, man. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. Happy New Year. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to start off wishing Councilwoman Clark well. You know, hope to see her back in the new year. Also, wanted to acknowledge all of the hard work of staff and our boards, all the work that they put into all of the agenda items tonight. There's so many that we had to tackle that were pretty complex. I think we did it pretty well. You know, I had to break out my much more comfortable headphones tonight, knowing that it was going to be a little bit longer. And so, you know, we had a couple hours, you know, in the meeting, or what, an hour and a half? But all of the work behind the scenes to make this happen, all of the hours that our staff put in, and all of the public meetings with, you know, Parks and Rec, DDA, zoning, planning commission, ITech to review in detail all of the things that we voted on, I definitely don't want that to be overlooked. So many people in our city donated their time, their talent, and their resources to making sure that we're making the best and most educated decision that we possibly can with each one of these items. And so I just truly appreciate everybody who serves on those boards. And, you know, a couple of them either have openings, open slots, or potentially will in the coming months. And so if you're sitting at home and you have a passion for any of the things that we talked about tonight, join one of those citizen boards because we really do rely on them to be able to give us, you know, their feedback and their information as we're tackling really large agenda items like the ones we did today. Also, looking forward to a new year. Yeah, I'm not going to jinx anything, but I don't see any way that 2021 is not better, right? And so looking forward to that, and I guess Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year to everybody who celebrates, you know, all of those things. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilor Rorback?
I think some, I also want to wish Councilwoman Clark well. Hope she recovers quickly. And want to wish everybody, Mayor Grassstein, I want to wish you a Happy Hanukkah. I think it's Fifth Night, right? So Happy Hanukkah. I'm sorry that you had to be here instead of home celebrating with your family, but we appreciate your sacrifice to do that. I also want to just wish everybody a happy holidays, whatever you celebrate, and you know, it's a Happy New Year. Next year, there's a vaccine. It's on the road. There's a light at the end of the tunnel. I'm hopeful for next year, and so I hope that we can all see that hope coming through. I also want to thank the staff at the DPS particularly for their work getting up our holiday lights across the City Hall campus. It looks really beautiful, and I want to thank everybody who participated in the drive-through light thing. I'm thinking about the calendar now. I can't remember if that happened since our last meeting or not, but thanks anyway. Thank you again, if I said it already. But I just want to thank everybody for that. And I just want to especially send out my, my well-wishers and prayers to those people in Madison Heights and this community who are suffering and ill right now with COVID-19. It has hit very close to home in my family. And I look at the numbers today. It looks like in the last 30 days, 466 of Madison Heights residents have tested positive for COVID. That is, that's a lot. That's just in the last 30 days, and I know it's growing every day. So please, I beg of everyone in this city to be responsible, to take care of each other, take care of your neighbors, check in with your neighbors, and wear masks everywhere. You know, my, my family, I have a family member who is, who is ill, and we don't know how we got it. You know, Bailey ever leaves the house? So who knows how it happens, but we just, I just beg everyone just to be responsible and to take care of your community by wearing a mask and keeping your distance until we can see that light come over all of us next year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Honor, I would pretty much echo the same comments made by counsel thus far. Of course, our hearts go out to the families that have lost loved ones due to COVID and otherwise during this past year. And as the vaccine is being distributed, our, our hope is that the coming year will be much better for for all of us in Madison Heights, as well as everyone in the country and in the world. I want to wish counsel and your families and all our citizens a happy holiday season and looking forward to much better things.
Thank you. This is Marsh.
Echo the same comments and wish everybody a happy holiday.
This is Rotman.
Just want to say happy holidays and have a safe and happy new year.
Thank you. Mr. Gennings?
Yes, Mrs. Mayor. Like to echo the same comments everyone made. It's been a tough year for a lot of folks. Like Emily said, there's light at the end of the tunnel. I saw on TV today, a young lady got a shot. I think she was a healthcare worker and one of the first to get a shot to hopefully put this pandemic in its place and stop it then in its tracks. Happy holiday to everyone. Happy Hanukkah to Mr. Sherman and our mayor and the whole community. Again, I think things will be better next year. I hope they are, and I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gennings. Mr. Saltus?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too want to echo the sentiments of all my colleagues on council. Happy holidays and Happy New Year. Some changes. First, Detroit Lions staffer, he's out, according to the Fruit Press. Also, in the news just now, Trump is out finally after what was, to me, the most embarrassing attempt to hold on to power. Biden wins from the Electoral College. And so, yeah, again, it's just happy holidays. Everybody stays, stay safe, wear a mask, do everything can, and the vaccine's coming or it's on its way. So hopefully that's a, it'll turn the tide. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So the last time we were all together in this room, I believe it was, I made the comment along the lines of, I survived SARS when I was in Toronto, and if you wash your hands, it's not going to be that big a deal. I absolutely and wholeheartedly take that back. This is a huge deal. This is not what I went through before. And my heart goes out to everyone who is suffering, everyone who is suffering because they are sick, everyone who is suffering because they have a loved one who is sick or who they have lost. My heart goes out to the families that are separated because of this, to those who have lost their jobs because of this, to businesses that have lost their livelihood, to the children who, you know, who are suffering now because they are not allowed to go to school, and it's not the education that they're missing. It's the safe place because they are stuck at home with people who could be abusing them, to the women who are stuck at home with abusers. My heart just goes out to so many people, but this is the season of light, and I see so much light. And with everything that has gone on, with all the social justice issues that have come to light, we are seeing so many helpers out there. So I give a huge thanks to the helpers in our community, the volunteers and the people who have stood up and who have helped people who have offered food and clothing and money and resources to others. I give so much thanks to you and to everyone who is a part of our community. And to Mrs. Marsh and our staff, when this all hit and we had to suddenly shut down the city, but we really couldn't shut down our city. Our police couldn't say, we can't come to a call because of COVID. Our fire department couldn't stop going out on runs. Our garbage had to be picked up, all these things that needed to be done. And Mrs. Marsh and her staff, they did it. They did it differently, but they did it. And, and Mrs. Rorback, the, the tree lighting has been since our last meeting. So, you know, the fun things that staff was able to do, we were able to have our tree lighting, not the way that we have in the past, but we were able to do that. So I want to give thanks to everyone who was able, who has stepped up and who has helped. I wish Councilwoman Clark well. She was, she is not feeling well, so I'm hoping it's nothing major. But these days, you always get worried when someone says, I'm not feeling well. So I wish her a speedy recovery. And, and I wish, I wish the best for everyone in the new year. I don't think anybody would have answered that question right if they were asked five years ago, where do you see yourself in five years, or even a year ago, where do you see yourself in a year? And Councilor Rorback and Councilwoman Clark, they came on to counsel. They were newly elected, and they had done their newly elected training, and I don't think they covered any of these things. I don't think, how you, how do you do Open Meetings Act and Zoom and all that? So I think we've all had to adjust, and I think we've all done a pretty good job. So I thank everybody for their support, and I wish everybody happy holidays. Yes, Mrs. Rorback, this is the fifth day of Hanukkah. We lit our candle. We lit the candles before I came this evening, so thank you. I'm not missing out on too much, but want to wish happy holidays to everybody in the community. Wish everybody a safe and healthy new year. Our next meeting will be in January. I believe it is January 12th. The time is now 9:17, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.